Okay, so now back to, back to the agenda work session, comprehensive plan, Aubrey.
Aubrey's bringing this up. Council may recall at the last two retreats, we had talked about an update to the comprehensive plan. This evening Aubrey's going to walk council through staff's proposal and how to accomplish this task that was set before us.
Good evening. So, I presented the same presentation to the Planning and Zoning Commission at their last regular meeting and our planning subcommittee also met briefly. Several of the commissioners have attended our annual conferences to get information about comprehensive planning process. Comprehensive plans have always been in state law. If you have zoning, you have to have a plan to make your zoning decisions based on that. How fancy of a plan that is, ranges from, you know, a map to the city of Plano. I believe their comp plan is completely online. You can't even print it. It's a whole website and, you know, so there's no requirement as to what your plan has to be. You just have to have one. So, just a little bit about comprehensive planning in general. This isn't a comprehensive plan, but just the concepts of comprehensive planning. The purposes are to improve the physical environment of the community as a setting for human activities, to make it functional, beautiful, decent, healthy, interesting, and efficient. To promote public interest, the interest of the community at large. To facilitate democratic determination and implementation of community policies on physical development. To affect political and technical coordination of community development. Inject long-range considerations into the determination of short-range actions. So, a lot of our long-range plans that we have in place address that. And then bring professional and technical knowledge to bear on the making of political decisions concerning the physical development of the community. So, state law, like I said, requires that we have comp plans. The requirements that they include land use, transportation, and public facilities are the three basic plans. That can be a single plan or a coordinated set of plans organized by different topics. And they are used to coordinate and guide the establishment of development regulations. So, a comprehensive plan is a document of some form. And the requirements for that is that we establish procedures for the adoption of that plan. We establish procedures for amendment of that plan. And then, like I said, types of plans can range from maps to written documents or policies. And cities are allowed to determine the relationship between the comprehensive plan and its development regulations. So, this is all straight out of state law.
Just for council's benefit, this would be the foundation for the zoning ordinance that we discuss from time to time, whether or not our lot sizes should be X or we should have development of Y at this particular location. The comp plan is supposed to steer that discussion. It's the foundation for the development of those ordinances.
Which is a good segue into the next point, is that our current comprehensive plan, the overall document, was last updated in 1998. So, some of the items that it references under public facilities, the police department was still over on Willowick, if that gives you any reference. So, pieces of that document have been updated over the years. So, that's what we're going to talk a little bit about tonight. So, the land use plan or map was adopted in 2008. So, this is a guide that we should base our zoning decisions on. If we, you know, if we approve a zone change that's different from here, then we need to amend this map as well. It should identify your residential areas, your commercial areas, and guide your growth on how you want it to happen. This is different from the official zoning map that shows the zoning that's on the ground right now. Our transportation section, which, these are the three basic topics that are required by state law. So, the land use, then transportation. We actually updated this one in 2018, so we're not doing too bad. This was our major thoroughfare map. The subcommittee and the commission worked on this one. And so, it's fairly up to date as well. The public facilities section does include parks and recreation facilities. And that was last updated in 2010, the Parks Master Plan. But again, our 1998 comprehensive plan doesn't have Centennial Park in it. It's just really outdated and just the wording needs to be updated. So, we have, we've kept up with plans and different things like that, but we just need to do a little bit more work. So, this is the current comprehensive plan. On the left are the chapters that are in the plan. The yellow, purple, and green are the pieces that are required by state law. And then, the column on the right is updates that have been done. Or, so for instance, the executive summary is the why, the what, and the how of the comp plan. That needs to be updated. The goals and objectives are pretty general. I think they still apply, but they need to be reviewed and determined whether or not to keep them or update those. The baseline studies is basically describing Friendswood, our population, our housing, a lot of demographics. That needs to be updated. So, we have other plans, our capital improvement plan, and the downtown improvement plan, and citywide traffic study that have been done recently that we could use, we can reference in our comprehensive plan, or use the baselines from those studies to help us update our comprehensive plan. So, the purpose tonight is to get some direction from you all. The proposal right now is that staff will update the written part of the comprehensive plan and kind of get the, get the plan back on our desks. It's kind of been on the shelf a little bit somewhat over the past several years. So, get the plan going, get it refreshed, start using it again actively. And if we see fit to go out and hire a consultant to add some things, if we want some new objectives or goals for the city, then we could consider hiring a consultant, or, you know, adding some more chapters to the plan at a later date. But, the proposal now is just to get it, our basic information refreshed and start from there.
Some of the benefits, and I'll add real quick to bringing in a consultant, would help with the visioning component of a plan ultimately, to go out there and solicit input from the public in a more scientific and broad nature approach, as opposed to hearing from the same individuals that pay attention to this type of stuff. Something in that arena, a consultant would help out quite a bit, but we're not proposing that just yet.
So, I might be confessing to be a little bit nerdish, but I am so happy about this. I love comprehensive plans, and I think they should be updated a lot more often than 20 years or even five years. So, I'm really excited about this. I think it would be good, Mo, for us to, as council, four of us are in our first term. You're a first city manager, first-time mayor. I think it would be a good idea if we could spend some time, either workshop each month, or in a retreat or something, where we take some of these and we make sure we all understand them, that when we read them, that we're understanding the same thing, that we're reading the same thing, and that the staff has the same understanding that the elected officials have. And then, we might be able to help you determine which ones are a priority to tackle first. And then, you might know which ones you need to bring in outside help for, or maybe nothing needs to be changed in them. They just need to be updated or edited. But, there have been so many different things. And I just think that an organization, be it a city, a business, anything, just runs more smoothly when everybody knows where they're going and what the goals are and the direction. And since we've had so many changes at the city, I don't think it's something that is hurting our city right now. We're not in trouble. We're not a city in trouble. We're not a city that's stagnant, or, you know, we don't have any big, huge issues. But, the $41 million bond that we just passed, it's a huge commitment towards Clear Creek. That should be in our comprehensive plan somewhere, you know, and how we're going to address that and tackle that, besides the other, in addition, or in addition to the other areas of the bond. So, I just think it's great timing to do this. I do think they're needed. I think it's also important for our volunteers who serve on other committees like P&amp;Z or CEDC. I'm still talking 80/20. I don't even know if anybody else is talking 80/20. So, I think it's important when the people who are serving on those volunteer committees are working and understanding the same thing that council understands and that staff understands. So, I applaud you for bringing this. I'm very excited about it.
Yeah, I wanted to echo what Councilwoman Hank, Councilwoman Hank said, if we could workshop it, and maybe we could include planning and zoning in those workshops, I think, just so that we all have a good basis of it. And I had a second, I had a question. Do we, or have we, or maybe it's included in here, do we ever look at the environmental impacts of our city in these comprehensive plans?
We have a master drainage plan, but other than that, I don't, I'm not aware of any.
So, our plan historically has not had an environmental or sustainability component to it. There are, there is a master drainage plan that takes into account some of the more problematic areas of the city, but it's not a city-wide comprehensive analysis similar to what we did with the subcommittee, the drainage subcommittee. We can add an environmental component if that's the desire of council. That's something that we would not be able to do in-house. We don't have environmental capabilities with regard to our professional staff, but that's definitely something that can be looked at.
And that was, it is a desire of at least one of our subcommittee members really wants to do that. And she emailed me some samples of, I believe Mary Queen Catholic Church has a sustainability plan, and she emailed me one other one. So, that has been discussed as well.
You're talking about the subcommittee to P&amp;Z?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
P&amp;Z is discussing it.
I completely agree with Trish. I think this is a great idea. I'd like to know how much of this comprehensive plan can be done in-house, and how much do you think would have to go out to get outside council on? I know that there, in addition to having P&amp;Z with us, and some infrastructure on roads and that sort of thing needs to be addressed in this comprehensive plan too. So, how much can we do in-house versus going to outside council?
I think we could update everything that we have. We can update it. As far as visioning and coming up with new objectives, I think it would just be fresh to have an outside people who do this on an everyday basis for other cities and have that. And, you know, sometimes I think we get, we're in the box, and it's hard to look outside that box. So, you know, having fresh eyes for visioning and things like that would be.
Well, the current zoning map that I was provided is quite a bit different from one in here, but y'all are keeping that updated pretty regularly that I could tell.
Yeah, so, the future land use map is the one that's in this presentation. So, that's a completely different document from the official zoning map. So, they're not the same thing. The official zoning map is what's on the ground. And we're about, you have to update. So, we track changes that are made, and then at a certain time, we update and adopt a new map. And that's actually about to come before you in January. We're going to adopt a new official zoning map. But, the future land use map is some, it's just a map that we get public input on, and we adopt that map as a guide. So, we should look at that map when we make zone changes and make sure it complies with that.
I completely agree with Trish. I think if we could workshop some of that, that would be great, just for better understanding for people who've only been here a year.
Sure.
If I may, I know it's no secret, since I've been on P&amp;Z, I have been asking for this, because I too went to one of those conferences, and I was like, yes, we need to do this. I do have a little bit of concern about how much you can do in-house. You know, it takes a lot of time, effort, energy. So, I would just want to be mindful of, I know y'all have your regular job to do as well. And the other thing, the visioning is real important, I think, because this was done back in the 90s, and it was 2020. Guess what next year is? 2020. So, much like Lauren Griffith and Associates came in and helped us with the downtown plan, I think that they did a great job of reaching out to our community and trying to get who wanted to be heard, heard. So, I think it'd be very, very important that we do not just hear from the usual folks, but anyone and everyone who's interested in this, to give them the opportunity to have a say. So, thank you all for taking this on. I'm so excited. I can't tell you how excited I am.
Thank you.
I think it's great. Mo, what would you think about, maybe we propose a, you know, our next council retreat, which we typically have had in February timeframe, be a joint meeting with council and planning and zoning, and obviously open to the public, but with this being the major topic of discussion for that.
That's perfectly, that's okay with me. So, we'll get that scheduled.
Does that schedule hinder you from doing what you're proposing that you start doing now?
Aubrey can't celebrate Christmas because of it, but other than that, we should be fine.
It would actually be great timing. Planning and zoning's having our annual retreat two weeks from tonight, so we can put that on our to-do list for next year. We review the permitted use table come in January, so timing-wise, that would work.
So, you guys will be sharpening your knives, getting ready for the meeting with us. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
It's all good. Joe's looking at me like, ooh. Well, I think we're all probably in strong agreement that it's good to have a comprehensive plan, and oh, by the way, maybe update it once in a while. Yeah, so, obviously, I think we're going to be in support of this. And I agree with you that probably some outside help would help eventually, not, not to get to, you know, our basic plan back up to snuff, but sort of with that visioning part of it. You know, there are smarter people out there that do this every day for other cities.
And one helpful thing I did read in state law is that it, which it allows, but I think it would be a good trigger in the future. Your, so we have to review the land use, our land use assumptions every five years in relation to how we charge impact fees. And so, we do population updates. And so, I think that's a good trigger to review both the comp plan and, you know, those land use assumptions kind of at the same time. So, every five years, we would have that timeframe to review those.
Sounds good. Anybody else have a comment? Thanks, Aubrey.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Rod. One more item to discuss on our work session, police department, extra duty, off-duty, and special event jobs discussion.
Mayor and council, police chief Wieners and deputy chief Rogers are on their way up to talk about an item that we had talked about briefly at the last council meeting related to special events, as well as bring y'all up to speed on some issues with regard to off-duty employment.
Chief, could I interrupt you, because I saw Hill and Samantha in the back, and we have not actually met Samantha. So, Hill, would you mind, as the city engineer, introducing your new deputy city engineer? Come on up. Come on up, everybody. Come on up. Come on down.
I told her she wasn't going to have to come up to the podium.
You can stay back there in the, stay, stay back there in the front row and.
But, I'd like to introduce Samantha Herdose. She is our new deputy director of engineering. She comes with us, to us, with lots of experience in hydraulics and hydrology. And, I guess, if you want to say.
Spent some time with the Corps of Engineers.
Army Corps of Engineers, yes. Eight years.
I have 15 years of experience. Oh, sure. I have 15 years of experience in drainage. I spent eight years down with the Corps in Galveston. That's kind of where I got my start. But, I've lived in this area for the last 15 years, and I'm really excited to help everybody with drainage problems, because that's my passion, and this is where I live.
Thanks. Great to have you. Now, you don't have to stay for any more of the meeting, eh? But, thank you for being here. Sorry, chief.
Hard act to follow, right there.
Not for you.
Oh, yeah. So, let me allay any concerns before we get started. I'm not here to look for any money, and I'm not here to go ahead and present problems that don't have a very workable solution. But, after James's presentation last week, I mean, there was a couple of other things that were already kind of brewing his background issues. And so, as we go ahead and we enter into the discussion tonight, what I want you to keep in the back of your mind is that there is an issue with disability insurance for officers that are working off-duty jobs. And in addition to that, there are really some need for consensus as far as what the city expectations are for city employees to go ahead and work large events at city facilities. So, with that in mind, the issue on workman's compensation all came as a result of a Webster police officer being hit about 12 months ago, working a football game at Dickinson High School. The job was approved by the chief of police, and the officer was doing what officers do when he, when he was hit directing traffic. But, needless to say, at night, you know, it can happen, and TML did not cover the officer. They went ahead and essentially, you know, felt that the officer was operating as a independent contractor in that off-duty capacity, and that he was not going to be covered by workman's comp. So, with that in mind, what Webster did is they decided to use an off-duty management company and add 20% to whatever their off-duty rate is. So hypothetically, you know, the off-duty rate here is $35 an hour. You know, Marine Mass says that 20% would be about 7, and we're looking at about $42 an hour. And that $7 an hour goes to the off-duty management company for, you know, sponsoring liability and disability insurance. So, research with TML, both by Bill Bender and then the assistant city manager, they met with TML. And essentially, what TML has said is that, you know, if an officer is functioning at an off-duty job, and he has to assume his peace officer role due to a breach of the peace, you know, and you can, you know, come up with several scenarios, then that is when he's no longer in an off-duty status. He becomes an on-duty peace officer, and he would be covered by TML. However, so let's just use an example. If an officer is working, you know, at a, I'll say a football game, and there's a fight in the stands, and the officer goes into the stands to break up the fight, and he gets hurt, he's going to be covered by TML. If the officer is walking behind the stands and he slips and falls, he's not going to be covered. And if the officer is hit directing traffic, he's not going to be covered. So, there is an issue with workman's comp and liability insurance. So, what I wanted to go ahead and do was give you that as general background. You know how to flip these forward? There you go. So, yeah, what's the next one? So, the real question is, extra duty versus off-duty versus city events. That's kind of what we talked about last month. So, what we need to do is to differentiate what is an extra duty job. An extra duty job, just for the sake of simplicity, is somebody who's working at a bank, working at a private party, somebody who is working at a church, and there's probably about a half a dozen other examples that I could use. So, that is something that the officer does on his own time. He volunteers to go ahead and take that job, and in that capacity, he's got no disability insurance. So, what our intent is, in those circumstances, is to require the officer to get his own insurance. We've got a vendor. It's going to cost him about $28 a month, but if they're going to work extra jobs in the city at those events, they're going to have to buy insurance so that they have disability insurance. And, you know, the cost is probably about one hour's worth of an extra job event in order to be covered with workman's comp. The city of Houston provides that to the police officers as part of their contract. But, I'm not advocating for that. I don't think that any extra duty job or any extra duty employment should be funded or subsidized by taxpayer money.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
We passed a resolution in that we stated that if there was going to be an event where alcohol was served, and there was going to be more than 500 people there, you had to have so many officers.
Right.
There's going to be more than 1,000 people there. There's going to have to be that. We had to escalate the amount of offers for, officers for how many people were going to be there. That's something that we passed that want, we wanted to have happen. So, now, when we as a city require that, are they, no, they're not volunteers then. We're requiring that for that event. Is it?
Bingo.
I'm just wondering.
So, up until this point, if there was an event that involved more than 75 people and served alcohol, they were required to hire an officer. Those officers were obtained through the extra jobs program. It wasn't typically something that they were on duty. They were off-duty status, and as the chief had highlighted here earlier, they weren't covered from a liability and disability standpoint. There have been instances where there was a request for off-duty employment. The police department will put out who's interested in working whatever event, and there was, there was not a sufficient number of officers sign up, so that the city had to determine whether or not there's a safety concern, in which case we required the officers to work, and they were required to work at overtime rates because they had already worked their normal shifts.
So, if, if a private function is happening, and they're required to have X number of police officers or security, and Friendswood can't fund it because we don't have enough off-duty interested, or enough officers interested in off-duty, couldn't they go someplace else and get the officers to the sheriff's department or something? I mean.
Whatever, you know, we don't, it doesn't matter to us how many special events. It can be one, or there can be 100. All, we're looking to go ahead and determine this evening, if there is a, an event, big or small, at a city facility, does the council expect that the police department is going to provide off-duty or officers that aren't assigned to a shift to go ahead and cover the events? If the answer to that question is yes, so let's say that, you know, we had the craft fair. Everybody see the craft fair? They were supposed to get an officer or two. I can't remember exactly what the requirement was. There was no officer that was there for the craft fair this weekend. We monitored what went on. We made a determination that, you know, whoever the sponsor was, you know, that we weren't going to have a discussion during the event, but there would be a discussion afterwards. But, if the council has an expectation that we're going to cover events in city facilities with officers that are not on the duty schedule, then that's really not an extra job. That is where we're requiring them to work. You know, it's a Fair Labor Standards Act issue, and they have to be on the clock.
So, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, what, what are other municipalities doing, and how much would it cost an event holder, for example, to provide liability insurance for the officers that they're required to have on duty? Do we know?
It varies from city to city. I know that the police department have looked at a number of other agencies and how they operate in this regard. The most cost-effective was what the chief had proposed, and that is require our officers to secure their own individual liability and disability insurance at the rate of about 28 to 30 bucks a month.
Well, that's fine, but you're asking them to provide, to pull money out of their pocket to go and serve somebody else's interest at an event.
If, if they want to work that off-duty rate. My suggestion from a staff's perspective, regardless of how we move forward, that those event sponsors pay the full freight of that.
Well, that, okay, so that, that's. Well, that, okay, so that, that was what my question was.
Correct.
So do we, do we require the event holder to pay the additional twenty-eight dollars per officer, or who pays for that?
So the officer would pay for it. The event holder would provide liability insurance just in case anybody else gets hurt there, but just for the sake of the well-being of our officer, we would request that they have their own. In the insurance game, there's always an issue...
My point was, is, would it be, do we have an example, or is it out of the realm of possibility to ask the event holder to provide that insurance for that off-duty officer working the event? I think they were, in the case where, I mean, like Webster goes to an insurer that is gonna say, okay, for over and above, seven dollars over and above your rate, we will cover these guys. So now you pass that rate, you're charging the event holder forty-two dollars an hour for these guys, and thirty-five of it is going to the officer, and seven is going to the, to the...
Correct.
Insurance holder.
For the events that, you know, are not at a city facility, and where there's no expectation that the job's gonna be filled or is not. So, let's go ahead and use Music Fest as an example. The Music Fest is really the model. It was a large event, took up, you know, probably, what, eight or ten hours of, you know, per officer, and we had, I think, twenty-two officers that were assigned to that event, and the cost of security for that event was about twelve thousand dollars. And Friends of Downtown would bill for the twelve thousand dollars that it costs for the security, and they paid it, one hundred percent. So, what we're, you know, again looking to get consensus on is if there's an event at a city facility, big or small, is there an expectation that a Friendswood police officer is gonna be there to provide security and to represent, you know, the city's interest? Not necessarily the sponsor, but the city's interest.
Now, liability was not an issue for your example, right? Because you assigned those officers that duty.
That's right.
These guys weren't working as...
That's correct.
They were on the watchbill.
Correct.
They were, they were working that day.
And if they were injured at that event?
They were covered.
Covered.
So would it be easier for all events at city sponsors to just contract with the police? They have to pay the police for the, for the...
Can you, can you give me the next slide?
I know, but at a...
Here's what previous councils had, have approved as city-sponsored events, and these have been funded, these have been provided for...
By the city.
In the PD's overtime account. So, you take a look, you know, the traffic control for Fall Hall, the homecoming parade, youth sports parade, Christmas parade, Halloween in the park, and then what was at Fig Fest, the car show, you know, all those have been previously discussed by previous, by previous councils, and those were, are the city-sponsored events. So I guess if everybody's good with those, you know, then we're fine. So, next slide.
But you're asking about two things, right?
It's two separate issues.
Yeah, so you're asking about, no, I, so I think the delineation is clear.
Right.
If it is a city-sponsored event, then the officers that are working the event are actually on duty for the city, and they're covered by...
That's correct.
Workers' comp and TML.
That's correct.
If it is the, if it is the...
Music Fest.
Music Fest, that's not a city-sponsored event, who pays for the cost of the, who pays the insurance for the officer in the event that he gets hurt? Workers' comp.
Well...
Right?
They're on the clock.
So currently, right now, how is that being handled? The city's paying that, right?
Correct, and they're being billed...
Under the assumption that TML was gonna handle it, right?
But because they're on the clock, they're covered.
They would have been covered.
So in Texas Music Fest example, those were on-duty officers that were asked to work by the police department, so that we were covered.
That's a bad example, okay. So, the guys working traffic control outside of the football games, right, home football games.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be a problem that we're gonna have to...
That's the scenario that happened in Dickinson.
That's the scenario that happened in Dickinson, and that's a scenario that we're gonna have to discuss with the...
Right, so the question is, is, is who pays the workers' comp? Or are you asking that the city sponsor these events?
I'm not asking for the city to sponsor any event over and above what you have right here. If you hit the next slide, these are two that we do that no council has gone ahead and approved.
Right.
They're being paid for out of PD overtime budget. We can cover that. We're not looking for any money, but what was there on the previous slide?
Sponsored.
Those, and then these two, next.
Okay.
These are the city-sponsored events.
May I, I'd like to just ask a simple question. You mentioned earlier that there's a management company that, that you could contract with that would cover y'all's workman's compensation for those particular events that are not city-required or city-requested. How would that work? Are they a management group that, like, work with Webster, work with Clear Lake, work with Friendswood? They're, they're already established vendor?
Well, they're an established vendor, but again, you know, what they're not gonna be able to do is be able to, you know, order anybody to work. So what I'm looking to do is to make a, you know, is to get a determination that if there is a city event, or if there is an event at a city facility, big or small, is there a council expectation? I know what the city manager's expectation is because we discussed it already, but is there a council expectation that we're gonna provide officers for each of those events?
I think we've already made it our expectation when we passed the resolution, saying if you're having this kind of event on city property, and you're going to have to have one person, one, one police officer for every hundred, or whatever our established rule is, we've already made that assumption, haven't we?
But we can...
Correct.
We could have PD establish this fund where these people that contract for, let's say, they hire an officer to stand outside of the church on Sunday to direct the traffic.
Well...
Corey's at Texan Bank every day.
They, they pay, they pay that into that fund for these guys. A portion of that money goes to the, this, no, Bill's shaking his head, no?
Can I?
Come up here, Bill. Got the answer man back there.
I'm, I'm also a little bit leery about this because we can all of a sudden force more cost on these types of events like crafts in the park and like the Texas Music Fest, that they can't afford it, then these events can't be put on. So, there's gotta be a fine line here where we don't rush people out of here and say, well, if you can't afford it, don't come. I mean, we, we gotta make a pretty good decision on this because we could make it where there's nobody can afford to do an event in Friendswood.
Can I ask a question? Many times when you go to work for a company, you have life insurance, you have health insurance, on and so forth, and it stays with that company. If you leave that company, you lose all that coverage. You also have the opportunity to go out and buy these things for yourself.
Correct.
And what I am understanding here is that our officers certainly have a certain amount of coverage as long as they're on a city-sponsored job. When they do something that isn't city-sponsored, then they're not covered.
Correct.
If we employ this fund that you're talking about, would we be enabling those officers to, in a manner of speaking, have their own insurance to complement the insurance that we have through the city? Is that how this would work?
No.
They have that opportunity now, right through the city. We have plans that allow them to buy liability coverage and things and injury coverage.
Because if I'm working extra jobs, and I find out now that I'm not gonna be covered, I think that'd be the smart thing to do.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna require them to do. We're not gonna leave it optional for them. We can do that by policy. But your point is exactly, you know, the dilemma. You know, who pays? So the real question is that if we have an expectation that an officer is gonna be there, then it's really not a volunteer. It's really not...
We're requiring it.
We're requiring it. And if we're requiring it, then it's an overtime issue.
And Bob, don't we have situations where you get enough volunteers and other situations where you don't, and you've got to assign officers to supplement? Do you have that? Where you have some working...
Typically, typically what winds up happening, if we have an event and we can't go ahead and fill it with, you know, the number of volunteers, then we order them all to work and that they're paid at the overtime rate.
But if they're volunteering, we still have this problem of they're not covered, unless they have their own insurance.
Right, they're gonna have their own insurance. The real question, okay, so let's...
Just who's gonna pay?
Let's, you know, we had a fun run a couple of months, a couple of months ago, a month ago, and they wanted seven officers for the event. It involved going ahead and closing a roadway, you know, obstructing, you know, the thoroughfare so that the fun run could be, you know, done. They wanted seven officers for the event, and we only had one sign up.
Okay, so let me ask another quick question. To, to, is there a retainer fee or anything to hold this insurance company that's willing to insure officers' workers' comp for twenty-eight dollars an event? Do we have to have a retainer, or can we just put it in the fee structure that says the event holder has to pay twenty-eight dollars plus the cost of the officer?
It's a twenty-eight a month.
It's like a month?
Yeah.
So I mean, it's not that much, right?
Right, but my, that's right, so...
So my point is, I want the event holder to pay for it, one way or another, than the city to have to pay.
Well, the event holder, the problem that you've got is, we have the flapjack run. Okay, we have the flapjack run, huh?
It's only once a year.
Well, it's once a year, but we got the flapjack run. Seven officers have to, you know, have been tasked to go ahead and support that event. That's a city-sponsored event. Seven officers have signed up, and if we didn't have seven officers, then I'd order, you know, whatever the number was, the delta, to go ahead and work, and we'd have seven officers covering that event. And then, you know, the example with Texas Music Fest is we determined that we needed twenty-two to secure the park and the adjacent areas around the park. So we didn't get any complaints from the neighbors. In the event that we had a problem, we had, you know, people that could go ahead and react to the problem, and then we had officers that were stationed, you know, throughout the park, at the entranceways, and at various locations. In that particular case, you know, the expectation was that we would go ahead and provide the officers. The officers were ordered to work, and that was a very expensive endeavor.
So let me, let me, let me summarize. We have three cases. We have a city-sponsored event on a city piece of property. The officer's covered.
Correct.
We have an event that's on city property. It's not run by the city, but it's on city property, and, and we require them to have an officer. They're covered, correct?
No.
Why are they not? You just said that you would order them to...
They're not on the clock. If they're on the clock, they're covered.
So if we ordered them to work, they would be covered. If we did not order them to work, the current situation, they're not covered, but we're fixing that. Staff is gonna be, any officer that's gonna work an extra job is gonna be required to maintain their own workers' comp and liability insurance. But we're, those costs are being passed along to the event holder. So if John Scott has a party at his house, and he has two off-duty officers, you're gonna have to pay that off-duty rate, and that officer's already covering. And I interrupted.
And that's the third category. The third category is it's not a city event, and it's not on city property.
Correct.
It's a Texan bank or whatever.
Correct.
And they're, and what we're saying is, in that case, they're not covered, and there has to be a mechanism to cover them.
Correct, and we're, we're setting that mechanism in place, so that won't be an issue moving forward. As of today, they don't have coverage, but they're gonna be required to have coverage if they're gonna work extra jobs, and those costs will be passed along to the event holder. The only concern we have and direction we need from council is if they're not able to get the required prerequisite number of officers, is council okay with us requiring the officers to work and passing those costs on to those event holders? So, so that we don't have a situation where we tell XYZ event, you can't have it.
I do believe we've already done that by resolution. If we require it, then we're ordering it.
We have, but just, I just want y'all to keep in mind, when you had, if we had shut down the craft show this past weekend, and I didn't want there to be a line of individuals up here complaining to council.
How much would it be if we covered every officer? How many officers do we have?
Sixty...
Sixty?
Sixty.
Times twenty-eight a month? Can you maybe do the math real fast on these engineers that are on the board? Twenty-eight times sixty?
Sixty times thirty.
Okay, sixty times thirty.
We wouldn't do it simply because of the, of using taxpayer funds to provide coverage during a private event.
Kind of doing it already when we don't have enough officers and we make them work. Not on a private, not on a private party, but... But we can still have them reimburse us. I mean, I'm not saying not charge, not charge them.
I think, yes, and I, and I get, and I think I understand the direction. In short, council wants our individuals to be covered appropriately, and that the event holders cover the full freight of those costs.
Just like Music Fest pays that, they pay all the rest, but then we don't have that issue.
Correct.
Hey, chief, just one quick question, it's kind of not to do with this, but you mentioned sixty officers. I know like eighteen months ago, we were at fifty-five, and I think we were looking for five more, so are we about staff right now?
Oh, yeah, we, we're doing real well.
Okay, good.
You know, the hiring environment is...
Improving?
No.
Tough, yeah.
It's tough. But we've been able, you know, to get a mix of experienced officers and new grads from the academy, so we've got an officer graduating who's already on the payroll. I think he graduates the end of the week. We're hiring another officer out of that class. We've got one that's been working in the jail for a couple of years, Friendswood kid, and he's gonna go to the academy in January. So we're gonna be in the constant hiring mode, but the money that we put into salaries has definitely helped, and we're staying ahead of the power curve right now. We're not behind it.
Good, good.
Thanks, chief. Appreciate it.
Well, you know, like I said, we're not looking for any money, just guidance.
Well, you got it.
Sometimes I'd rather give you money.
It'd be a lot easier if you just asked...
Guidance is hard.
Twenty-five thousand dollars?
Hey, yeah, so, you guys bear with me for a minute. I wanna, I wanna take care of this little business. And Mayor Kay, is it all right if I read our closed executive session verbiage and then read our resolution? Because I know it's gonna be, it's gonna be mayhem here in a minute, and, and we're gonna finish this resolution with these kids, and then we're gonna... We'll eventually end up in the back for our closed executive session. I don't wanna read both of these things, and I, and I think I, I'm...
Yeah, that's fine. You can just, after executive session, let the public know that we will go into executive session after the Klein Elementary.
I'm letting them know right now.
Okay, yes.
We're gonna, after this next item, we're gonna go into closed executive session? I think you're done, chief.
I needed an alibi.
An alibi?
Yeah, alibi round. I didn't get all my rounds out. Meaning I still have bullets.
No, you're...
Take me to the last slide?
We, she flashed it up there for us for, for a quick, I got it on my screen.
Keep, keep, okay, so that's it. Go to that last slide.
There you go.
You got a bullet now.
Oh.
Quick. All right.